Mr. Cullen? Dr. Cortalino?
Here.
Mr. Graff?
Here.
Dr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. Morales? Mr. Moby?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Right.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Ken and Chen? And Zion Parker?
Here.
And I'm George.
Okay, thank you. Please rise to the attention please. Thank you. Jim, please read the open public meeting log statement.
New Jersey Open Public Meeting Log was enacted to ensure the right of the public through advance notice to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act of Montpel County Report of Education approved this meeting date, notice that the meeting has been posted in municipal building on Montpel Public Schools, Montpel Public Library, the Montpel County Report of Education and Ministry of Office Building, Montpel Public School Website, and advertising the paper.
Thank you. A report from our student representatives. Oh, boy, you must be getting so excited.
Yeah.
Okay, so for sports, at the Morris County Realize, Joe Salmon, Alex Rogers, and John Lee, this first in boys' discus for the first time in Montpel track history. When they combined throw up 162 feet, they surpassed the second place team by over 12 feet. At the MJK Combined Conference Championships against 16 schools, senior Bill McLean set a new school record in the long jump to take second place, and junior Dan Shaw finished to a third place finish in the 100-meter dash. The boys varsity baseball won their first round of states against Jefferson 10-0. They play Sparta on Thursday for quarterfinals, and their current record is 17-6-1. Girls varsity softball got to the semifinals of the Morris County Tournament where they lost 2-1 against Butler unfortunately, but they won in the first round of states against Lakeland 11-3, and play the quarterfinals Wednesday against Corinnes. Their record is 14-8. Boys varsity lacrosse finished their first round of states with a win against Wayne Hills 13-5. They play the quarterfinals tonight against Ridgewood. Their record is 12-7. And girls varsity lacrosse won their first round of states against Mount Olive 19-4. They play Northern Highlands today for quarterfinals, and their record is 12-5.
And for extracurriculars, for May 2nd to May 7th, 27 students competed in Decker's International Competition in Atlanta, Georgia. Four students placed in the top 20 in their categories, and senior Cindy Webb placed in the top 10. Each category had roughly 180 competitors, so all participants gave outstanding performances. Out of many participants in National History Day State Competition, eight Montpel students qualified for the national competition in June in Washington, DC, and seven students were selected as alternates. The students who competed are also part of the Montpel History Club and Gilder Learning Program. This week, May 19th through 24th, is National Prevention Week. Reach Responsible Educated Adolescents Can Help has set up a table in the rotunda where students can pledge against substance abuse. The DAC has set up the crash cars in two places around town, one in front of the municipal building and one in front of the police department. Each day of the week serves a different purpose, and the students will be making announcements every morning to make the rest of the school aware of the risks of substance abuse. Students will be representing Montpel's forensic team as they compete in the CFL National Tournament Friday through Monday.
For our school, on May 5th, senior Amanda Zizak competed in the Congressional Art Show at the Morris Museum. The show was part of the 2014 Congressional Arts Competition that is sponsored by the United States Past Representatives. Freshman Anjali Shah recently had her story Becoming Prey featured in the online magazine Tain Inc. The editors of the magazine were so impressed by her article that she also received the honor of an Editor's Choice Award.
And coming up, the senior breakfast is scheduled for this Friday, May 23rd, and the senior prom is next Thursday, May 29th. Student council and SAC election will take place next Thursday, May 29th. And that's it.
So where are you guys off to?
I'm headed to the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign.
I'm going to breakfast. Very nice. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Have a really great day.
Yes, have a good night.
Thank you. Just before we get to the superintendent's report, I would like to make a very small announcement, and it has to do with one of our administrators. Andrea Selvaji got married on April 25th, so we're very excited, very happy for her. She did that, made all the planning and all the work in the midst of being an outstanding Assistant Superintendent, and I'd like to give her a round of applause. Okay, Dr. Freed?
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you tonight. A couple of remarks to make. One was about a recent town hall meeting that we had. We probably had about 30 parents and many of our administrative staff attended as well. The meeting probably lasted between an hour and a half and two hours, and it was a lively meeting with lots of rich discussion, topics such as mathematics, use of drugs and alcohol by young adults, homework, class size, which are some of the topics discussed. And as I stated at that meeting, it gives me lots of good ideas for things that the community is interested in looking at in the future, and gives me, again, lots of good ideas and topics for things that help create our district goals going forward. So I appreciate everyone's attendance, and we'll certainly have more town meetings next year, and hope to see many, many people at those meetings. Recently, the district-wide retirement party was held, and that's sponsored by our Montpel Township Education Association. I see Peter Ford, the president, back there, leaving. And it was a well, well-attended event. Anyone who retired since the beginning of last, of this past year up until now was invited to come, and we had a good turnout of retirees, and a good turnout of their colleagues to support them. So we thank the MTEA for putting on a very nice meeting, or party, I should say, to congratulate our retirees.
Just two comments, one on the town meeting. Both Matt and I attended, and I really think it's a wonderful opportunity for the community to express concerns, in some time, and in some cases gratitude towards what's going on in our school district. But it is a great platform for open discussion that's less formal, perhaps less intimidating than at a board meeting. And I really want to applaud Dr. Freed for conducting these types of open-ended town meetings. I think they do wonders for our public relations, and to give anyone an opportunity to share concerns with him and any board members that may be in attendance. Matt, did you?
Yeah, I would just piggyback this because it was a really exciting evening. I think Dr. Freed, you've just done such a wonderful job in terms of reaching out to the school community and the overall community here in Montpel, tries to get word of everything that's going on in this district. You were a perfect self-advocacy man there. Thank you so much.
And I do want to comment about the district retirement dinner. I did attend, and I can say that we're losing a lot of years of teaching with this round of folks who have, teachers who have decided to retire. But the MTEA was very welcoming to me as a board member, and very appreciative that the board was representative, so I'll report that back to my fellow board members, and extend a thank you to Mr. Porter and those in attendance who expressed specifically appreciation for board participation in their retirement party, so.
Thank you both for those kind words. And speaking of communication and increasing communication, Sue Maranello, our district communications officer, is Cedar Hill in the back, in the green blazer. And as you've probably just heard through letters going out to all of our parents, we now have entered the world of social media. So I guess it's like, you know, like us on Facebook and follow us on Twitter, because both of those are now up and running, and you can find links to that, I guess, on our homepage, is that correct, on the website? So we're excited about that. We're moving into a whole new arena of communication, and we hope, of course, that helps increase the communication that we have with our parents and our students. Okay, so we have some exciting presentations this evening, some very, very good things that we'd like to share with you, and we're always excited to have students in front of us tonight. And tonight, we have a presentation from the students involved in our character education program at Cedar Hill. Dr. Raj, the principal of Cedar Hill is with us tonight, and Kathy Lundquist, our wonderful teacher, kindergarten teacher is here as well, who helps run the character education program there. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Raj and Mrs. Lundquist, and the students. So welcome.
Thank you.
And your leadership lack on that? Okay.
We are the Character Education Committee from Cedar Hill School. I am Emily.
I'm Lindsay.
I'm Hannah.
I'm Katie.
I'm Natalie.
I'm Rainie.
I'm Aiden.
I'm Matt.
In the fall of 2009, our Cedar Hill teachers wanted to build upon our Character Ed Program. They brainstormed ways we could give back while learning about the world outside our own community. A teacher at our school had worked with an organization called PEGUS Africa that helped schoolchildren in Ghana. PEGUS is a not-for-profit company that works to strengthen disadvantaged rural communities in Ghana through projects in education and health. Mrs. Al and Mrs. Pramal, our Character Ed teachers, email Mrs. Ellen Berenholtz, the president and founder of PEGUS, to talk with her about how Cedar Hill students can help
In 2010, Mrs. Berenholtz visited Cedar Hill to talk to students, staff, and parents about the difficulties of school-aged children like us living in Ghana. This is when we learned about Bishop Forson School in Ghana. From our discussion with Mrs. Berenholtz, we organized a collection of items to help Bishop Forson. We collected slavery, dice, and popsicle sticks, items which were used at Bishop Forson. We shipped all of this to Ghana in a large shipping barrel which our PTA purchased Next, our teachers packed readers, textbooks, and teaching aids from their classrooms which we also shipped to Bishop Forson. We thought we could help Ghanaian students learn by using several of the books that helped us with our learning. At Cedar Hill, we hosted our first pajama day where for $1, students and staff could wear pajamas to school. We did this to raise $480 to send a Ghanaian child to school at Bishop Forson.
In January 2011, our teachers helped start a Pan-Rep program with Bishop Forson. We even had a special PEGUS mailbox set up in our school's hallway. We were so excited when we arrived at the school on January 27th, 2011, and were greeted by a photo of Musa Abu, the student that Mrs. Berenholtz had selected for Cedar Hill. Musa would soon become our adopted student, and more importantly, our friend. Now that we had the name and a face, we set out a mission of fundraising to pay for Musa's schooling, room, and board. So that Musa could learn about us at our school, our parents and teachers made a DVD at Cedar Hill. The DVD showed our classrooms, our lunchroom, and our gym. Some of our teachers even recorded their own special hello for Musa. In the spring, we had our evening pajama party at Cedar Hill where we wrote letters to Musa and made an American flag out of a large piece of paper to send to Bishop Forson. We also played a geography game to help us locate Ghana on the map. To help raise money, Mrs. Berenholtz gave us bracelets made in Ghana which we sold at Pajama Day. In December 2011, we launched a good aid boutique as part of Cedar Hill's holiday boutique. We sold purses, wood carvings, baskets, and fabrics. All of our products came directly from Ghana. We've continued the good aid boutique each year as a fundraiser.
As part of our efforts to raise money to pay another year of Musa's tuition, we helped more fundraisers in 2012. This was also the year that Mrs. Berenholtz shared Musa's proper support with us and pictures of happy, smiling Musa. Our first fundraiser in 2012, we called Change for Change, which also began our partnership with the community bank. We asked classes to donate their spare change and recognized the class that donated. The event was held for three days after school at the bank. We worked with the bank's advertising department to create posters for the event. We made graphs to record how much each class donated. That year, we also started to learn more about the games that Musa and his friends played. We learned about a Ghanaian game called Awari, more commonly known here as Monkala. While Musa proudly plays this game on a board carved from wood, we used ed cards and stones to create the game. We played with our classmates all afternoon and had a great time. Not long after we came back to school in the fall of 2012, the communities in southern New Jersey experienced loss due to Hurricane Sandy. The Character Education Committee decided that we needed to focus our efforts to help our friends in New Jersey. We collected supplies for people who had lost so much. We collected toiletries like soap, shampoo, and conditioner, hairbrushes and combs, toothbrushes, and toothpaste.
In January 2013, we were again ready to focus on Musa. We want to spend a day with Musa Abu in February. Each spring was assigned a different day where students could purchase and wear a lanyard with Musa's smile. In May of 2013, we hosted another time. Mrs. Berenholtz came and watched me mile up a chocolate favorite snack similar to one Musa would enjoy, and made a playground ball out of sock stuff and newspaper. Other students made a t-shirt, which are prints made from carved potatoes dipped in water. We fundraised to raise money to provide lamplights to help the Ghanaian students do their homework after dark. Our school donated 75 pairs of gently-used sandals, sneakers, and shoes for Bishop Forson students. We made another video to send to our friends at Bishop Forson, which included a singing "God Bless America," and "It's a Small World and Just the Way It Is," were the words we wrote in just for Musa. In January 2014, the Character Education Committee started brainstorming new fundraising ideas for Musa. We came up with the idea of sponsoring a school-wide Read-a-thon. Students would read daily for a period of 10 days and ask sponsors to pledge money based on the amount of minutes read or the total number of books read during the 10-day period. We decided that the money raised from the Read-a-thon could be donated to the Learning Center that is currently being built at Bishop Forson. Mrs. Berenholtz said that if the Cedar Hill Read-a-thon is successful, she would think about coordinating a Read-a-thon at Bishop Forson and Cedar Hill at the same time during the 2015 school year. Our parents like this fundraiser because it gets us reading for a good cause. Our Read-a-thon was timed to happen in March, right before our annual school book fair. This year at the book fair, our students have a chance to purchase a paperback book, no more than $5 to $10, and send it to the Learning Center at Bishop Forson. They all put a sticker inside the book. So that our friends at Bishop Forson know that the book was donated with blood from Our Character Education Program thinks about ways we can help both globally and locally. In 2012, the Character Education Committee wanted to help a Cedar Hill teacher whose son had substantial medical bills resulting from his epilepsy. We helped two fundraisers to help the family. The first beat on Earth Day rolled plans to life help the lives where students had the chance to buy seedlings during lunch. All of the money from the sale was donated to the family and children that plant seedlings in their backyards. We helped another Change for Change at our local bank, where we asked families to again donate spare change to help the family. The 2014 Character Education Committee decided that we wanted to help a child living in New Jersey who is not as fortunate as most of us. Through our school giving program, we, where students purchase holiday gifts for needed children, one of our teachers loaned her a seven-year-old girl named Sophia with health issues and medical loss. Our committee got right to work and at the same time made a thinking about ways we can raise money. In January 2014, we proudly launched our penny challenge. A container was set up in each classroom for students to explore their pennies. After a week of collecting, we brought all of our pennies to our local bank and put them through the coin counter. We offered a nice candy party to the class who collected the most pennies. This fundraiser helped us contribute more than $1,400 to Sophia's family.
As you walk through our halls at Cedar Hill School, you will see our hallways labeled Kindness Way, Fairness Court, Loyalty Road, and so many more. Every classroom has an address such as Nine Tolerance Trip. As you walk through our school, you feel and see the respect that all students give to themselves and teachers when all visit Cedar Hill School. We have learned that giving back and the attitude of gratitude is really all we need to feel content and satisfied.
Thank you so much.
C E C, C E C, Character Ed Committee, Cool Enough to Care.
Thank you, Mrs. Al. Thank you, children.
Thank you, that was terrific. You're welcome to stay, but if you think it's getting late and they may have other responsibilities, you should feel free to leave as well. We appreciate you being here. Thanks, boys and girls, you were great today.
You know, just to say, this group of children performed, I mean, this is their local Board of Education, but this group of children performed recently in front of the Morris County School Boards Association and down at Rider University, so they're really well-seasoned public sneakers. So thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come out.
Okay, we're excited about our next presentation as well. From time to time, we have the opportunities to honor an individual who has achieved a very, very high distinction in the area of scouting, and tonight that individual is Greg Schmidt, who's received his Eagle Scout Award, and I'll ask Dr. Cortalino to do the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Freed. I can't speak highly enough about any young man who becomes an Eagle Scout. Many of you know my son's an Eagle Scout, so I understand the kind of work that goes into this achievement, and it's not something that happens over a month or a year. It happens over many years with each stage and each rank building on the one before, not only in what you're learning, but in your leadership ability and in your maturity. And I often say that becoming an Eagle Scout is really a life's work, even though you may only be 16 or 17 years old, or 19. So Greg, tonight, I'd like to present you with this, and I'll come down with you, and are there any other Eagle Scouts in the room? So please stand up and join us.
Questions, are there any other Eagle Scouts in the family?
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to say. Greg is in wonderful company because both of his brothers are Eagle Scouts, so congratulations So Greg, this reads, whereas Greg Schmidt is a resident of the township of Montpel, and whereas Greg Schmidt has attended the Montpel Township Schools for 12 years, whereas Greg is and has been a member of Boy Scout Troop 74 in the township of Montpel, and has reached the greatest distinction of achieving the position of Eagle Scout, and whereas Greg completed his Eagle Scout project by cleaning the headstones at the Montpel Reformed Church Cemetery with the help from the church and the Montpel Historical Society, some headstones date back to the early 1700s and were restored almost to their original condition. During the project, the group cleaned 58 headstones in the cemetery. Greg is also a member of the Order of the Arrow and the National Honor Society of Scouting, and I recently became aware that Greg, you are now a senior firefighter. So congratulations. Now therefore be it resolved in the Montpel Township Board of Education on its 20th day of May. Recognize and applaud the innovation, creativity, and hard work of Greg Schmidt for the honor and distinction he has brought to his family, school, and community in reaching his goal as an Eagle Scout. I'd like to have Mrs. Schmidt pet the children when they're (Laughter). That's quite an accomplishment.
And Mrs. Schmidt happens to be a dedicated member of our staff at Cedar Hill School, so congratulations to your retired family. Okay, we have another wonderful recognition in front of us. This is the second thing, probably, mine, and the Board of Education's favorite thing to do at board meetings is have wonderful presentations and recognitions, and tonight we're recognizing a Board of Education member who served a distinction, honored Board of Education, and then the individual is Jackie Ritchell. And I know Dr. Cortalino, and many of our board members probably have things they would like to say, and I'll make a comment or two later on as well. So, Aaron?
So Jackie, come on up. And you can bring whatever support system you need.
Is this, Aaron, is this gonna be a roast?
No, I just want to comment on something that Dr. Freed said about this is a favorite thing we do. Well, it's not a favorite thing to say goodbye to Jackie Ritchell, I can assure you of that. So Jackie, what can we say about Jackie?
Just don't touch the computer.
Jackie is the epitome of what a good school board member should be. She understood her role and only crossed the line for good reason. She understood that effective school boards drive student achievement, and that to be a member of an effective school board takes courage and sometimes compromise, and Jackie had both. You embody all of that. Jackie is fearless, as anyone who knows her knows. She's never afraid to speak her mind, and it was never about politics or soapboxing with Jackie, it was always about the children. She voted her conscience She voted her conscience, but in doing so, never compromised the integrity of the organization, its management, its program, or its policies. She was also the voice of common sense and pragmatism when the board seemed logjammed. Jackie would be the one to give us a slap on the side of the head to say, "All right, guys, it's time to stop." Jackie became a dear friend, and I miss you on the board, but I cherish our friendship. And I'm gonna let the other board members speak, and then I'm gonna come down there and read two things for you. So, anyone else?
One of the things I think has always made us a good board is our diversity and our wealth experiences. And Jackie came to us really having an experience that none of us had at the time. That is a long and distinguished career as a very active member of PTAs, I think around Valley View and Lizar. And then having the proper experience to the board to say, "Okay, now I've been on one side, now I can let you know how things are on the other side." Sometimes I think we try not to distract that, but sometimes we do. And I think Jackie kept us well-grounded in a lot of respects. And she's outstanding board member. We were even one before she was on the board, and we just miss you up here. We miss your baking too. Jackie used to give us very well fed during the meetings. Now I think we have to order in.
But nobody bakes like you do, that's for sure. Having sat alongside you for so many years, Jackie, what Mike said is true. You parlayed a great foundation with PTAs and PTCs into being an excellent board member and helping this district move forward in so many ways. The other night, when I saw Karen tend to realizing that you were gonna be on it this evening, I just thought of different adjectives that I could think of. Nothing negative.
None of you in the audience can see the look she's giving you at accident.
To help, to help others understand who you are, and spontaneous, spontaneously witty, genuine, caring, and probably one of the best outside-the-box thinkers I've ever dealt with in terms of just coming up with new ideas that just would score. To settle, when a board, when the board was having trouble with coming up with a decision, Jackie was always there, as Karen said, to ride the horse, the white knight, and help us come up with a good decision.
To stop the beating of a dead horse.
That too, that too. Personally, I know Karen and I will never forget sitting with you on the negotiating committee before the most recent MTEA negotiations. When negotiations are ongoing, there's a lot of time on the other side to decide what move they're going to take for the Board Negotiating Committee to sit in a room together and just talk. And we did that for countless hours, and that was so special for the three of us. I know it's something that we will each carry with us beyond the Board of Education. Jackie, Karen said, "We miss you so much up here," but hearing you say this evening that you feel very fulfilled and that your new life is so enjoyable is really wonderful to hear. Congratulations and thank you from the bottom of my hour-collected heart.
Anyone else?
Yes, just a few words. When I came on board, went to the board four years ago, Karen asked Jackie to mentor me, and it was incredibly significant because Jackie is a very practical, pragmatic thinker, and Jackie did bring an unbelievable amount of institutional knowledge because of required experience on the board, but also because she actually cares about what goes on in schools. So, when things get proposed that actually impact the day-to-day, the delivery of education to the children, and Jackie served on the Curriculum Committee for several years and as its chair, and there are very big shoes to follow. There were several topics on the Curriculum Committee that were kind of pep projects in the best possible sense of the word for Jackie, and Jackie does not let go. She's like a dog with a bone, which I love about her. So, she would consistently start, cycle back to things that had become board objectives or part of goals that we wanted implemented for the children, to the benefit of the children, to the benefit of the staff, and Jackie just never let go of that. She always came with her huge book of prior Curriculum Committee minutes and projects and notes, and always kept on it. So, for as much as Jackie has a wonderful personality, Jackie's also unbelievably, incredibly hard worker. She really was never afraid to get into the really truly ditty gritty of the details, and that's an extraordinary example to set. It's not an easy job, and she really did cast a long shadow, as far as I'm concerned. And I missed it too.
And just one or two comments. So, four years ago, before I was here at Monville Township, I was applying for this position, and Jackie was on the committee with the rest of the board members, and she would remain. Then there was a trip, that they took, a field trip to the district where I was working, and Jackie was one of those members. And at the time, when you're involved in this kind of process, the whole process can seem a bit of a blur, but I'll never forget the moment that the interview in my former district ended, and I was saying goodbye to the Board of Education members on the trip, and Jackie pulled me aside and said something rather threatening, like, "You'd better come to us." And I'll never forget that, and the sincerity she said it with. And I appreciate all of your service to the board and to the district, and your intense focus on what's best for kids, and like most of our board members who have that focus as well. You're always there, and you always made decisions in that regard, and I appreciate that, and appreciate that you found a board.
So, Jackie, I'm gonna, I'll bring these down, and I'll read them. But before I do that, I'd like to introduce Jackie's children, Charles and Chelsea. So, come on up and meet with your mom, and she also has her friends here, needing support.
This is the products of the Monville Township's courses. They've been through the whole system since kindergarten. Charles is a graduate of Hoxton University, being fully employed. And my daughter is a junior at St. Louis University, just got, Greg, she's got three days this month. This is Monville's products.
All right. You ready?
Yes, ma'am.
So, it's one here. We redo a little poem. It's called "Ode to Jackie," and I did not edit. This was created in Central Office, okay, with Patty and, Patty and Theresa. Jackie is moving on. Our days of baked goods will now be gone. We could always count on a delicious treat while on the board Jackie held to see. Birthdays were special for all of us. Jackie remembered to make fuss. The cake fuzz and emerald are not up to par. Her cakes and cookies are better by far. Jackie, although our praise for your baking is boiling, perhaps now our waistline can finally stop growing. All kidding aside, what do you, in your future endeavors and all of this? That's for you. And then Mrs. Black presented to Jackie Richel in recognition of your outstanding service to the children and community at the Metro Monville Township Board of Education, April 2007 to December 2014. You wanna say something? Yeah. Say something.
No, I did want to say something, real quick. I wanted to thank you all for your very kind words. It really means a lot. The time on the board means a lot to me. I had wonderful memories, and it was, you know, I laugh sometimes because when I first decided to run and the seven years I was on the board, my friends and family always said to me, "Why are you doing that? It's such a thankless job. Why would you wanna do this job?" And I really enjoyed myself. I had fun. I had opportunity to work with wonderful people, and it was very fulfilling. So, I want to say to the group at large, if you have an opportunity, both young and old, or in the middle, volunteer, make sure your voice is heard, and make a difference. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackie. And thank you, Charles and Chelsea, for sharing that.
Okay. And we have one more presentation this evening, which is a very special presentation as well. With us tonight is Jessica Sanford, the principal of Monville Township High School. We also have a number of other administrators here to be part of the presentation as well. And tonight, as a presentation, course changes and future opportunities in Monville Township High School, and we're excited about this. So, the board will get a great deal of insight into next year and into the thinking of our high school administration as they plan for the future. So, good evening, Doug. Welcome, thanks for being here.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna fill out the microphone. I apologize to anyone who had my back too, but I'll just take a quick step back, I think I'll be fine. The presentation this evening is meant to be a preview, a snapshot of what next year will look like. Before I go into some of the details about some of the program improvements, some of the enhancements that will be placed in the 1415 school year, as well as give just a brief overview of how a high school master schedule was made, I just want to say thanks to some people that I work with in particular at the high school. All, many of the supervisors that contribute to the programs at the high school are here tonight. They've done a fantastic job helping to not only put together these proposals based on feedback and getting to know their departments, working together as one whole team, and also working with the district administration to put together these proposals and bring them to fruition. But really, what I wanted, what's the highlight, what's the theme of this is, all of the things you'll hear about tonight are all for the benefit of our students. This is not all inclusive of the, there are different enhancements that are going to affect in the high school next year, but really, these are the ones that are going to be impacting the curriculum, what the students will experience in classrooms. So, that being said, we'll jump right into it. Just as I said before, we're gonna do an overview of how a high school master schedule is made. We'll also talk about the different program improvements that will be happening going for next year. And just when I say additional notes, I'm thinking about the things that are still in the works, things we'll be finishing before this, this school year concludes, and other projects we'll be working on over the summer to make sure the school is ready for the opening of school awards at the time. So, a snapshot of how a high school master schedule is made. In the years I've been a school administrator, every single year I've worked in whatever school or whatever administrative capacity I've been in, I've worked to develop that school's master schedule. A few years of experience now doing it. I personally think it's one of the largest projects, barring a major construction project, one of the largest projects with the most amount of complex steps, touching on all the different areas of the high school that a high school can undertake and complete from start to finish. It's really a project that takes about a year completely from start to finish, to give you a snapshot or an idea of what I mean when I say it takes a year. Just recently, we had a meeting, myself, the high school administrative team, as well as the supervisors, and we put the thought into everyone's head of, be thinking about the fifteen, sixteen schools. What curricular changes we want to have put into effect? What program improvements you want to put into effect? So, those thoughts of things that are not gonna happen for fifteen, sixteen months from now, we're already beginning that thought process. So, now we're at the tail end of that, I'll say, of getting ready to, how do we finish this school year and transition into next? So, just reviewing the steps, the biggest steps that the, I'll say, the students and the staff experience, we start with the development of our program of studies. This takes place as soon as we get right back, as soon as the school year begins, we review not only the current program offerings we have, but also, in conjunction with the development of the budget for the following school year, are talking about courses we might not want to offer anymore, and new courses we'll not really into exist. Some examples, and I won't, I won't go into detail about these, but new courses we'll be offering next year include such things as tomorrow's teacher, something we offer out of our arts program. Another, and this is a very recent development, is an additional AP physics course that focuses not on just mechanics, but will focus on electricity and magnetism. I had supervisors talking about those. Two examples, there are others that do exist. We're also initializing the master schedule. This is behind-the-scenes work that is happening. It deals with our student information sys, system, and actually starting a whole new school year and running it in parallel to the one that currently exists. And like I said before, we're doing this all in conjunction with the development of our budget, with proposals being put forward to our business office, which in turn, come forth for sooner or later. Moving on, as we transition to, we change calendar years, and we get into January, this is when our teachers go through the process of making recommendations for our students. They'll typically do this as soon as we get back from the winter break. They'll do it leading up to midterm exams, which usually happens around the end of January. We're also thinking about transit, beginning to think about transitioning our eighth graders into the high school. So, we're having our eighth grade orientation, soon thereafter, our guidance councils are revisiting, goes our middle school to meet with them, and begin to help them understand what are you gonna be recommended for, what are the choices to make, begin thinking about actually putting together a plan for a course of study throughout high school. As we get past the course recommendation process, our counselors then jump right into meeting with students and their families to begin requesting courses for the following year. We typically start that process with the older students, so current eleventh graders, and work our way down through the grades. It takes the better part of a month or month and a half to meet with all those students and develop those course request process. Each counselor wants to make sure that that conversation with the students is as valuable as possible, and to make the best choices for their future course of study and their post-high school plans. Continuing on, we conclude that process sometime around, I would say, late March, and that's when we begin building our master schedule. Before we actually begin that building, though, we go through the process of, based on a student or course request, deciding what courses will actually run based on student need or demand. We go through the process of determining how many sections of each course we plan on offering. This is the part where we're really thinking about staffing the building for the following year, we're making significant staffing decisions, making recommendations to the assistant superintendents, superintendents, and possibly instructors for the education. That's also when we might begin advertising for new positions that may come into existence. That's right in line when that budget's going to be adopted and approved, so we can sometimes post those positions as anticipated openings. That's something we took advantage of this year in the hopes of really attracting candidates to get the best applicants for this. As you'll see from the agendas, there's many high school positions where people are being recommended, and they're great, wonderful applicants, very qualified, talented, young folks. The process for building a master schedule, as we transition through the last two months of the school year, starts to wrap up. We begin to finish that master schedule, we're building it, and once again, this is using the power of our student information system to run the best schedule possible, that's satisfying course requests as possible. That is the main focus of building a master schedule, is to give, build a greater schedule that allows students to take the courses they want to take. That's the primary focus. There are other things that go into that, but they are secondary. And finally, as we transition from May to June, our focus is how do we communicate that information to our counselors, to our staff, to our students and families. And that communication process will happen in June, but it typically, sometimes can be lingering throughout the summer. Usually, schedules will be released with limited, limited information on them in the month of June, and a much more detailed version of the schedule will be released, probably sometime August, just prior to the school year starting, particularly for the eighth graders, because they'll have that official orientation for them in very late August. So, that's the development of a master schedule in a nutshell. It's a simple process, as it says. Before I turn over to supervisors to talk about some specific things in each of their regular areas, I do want to say a special thanks to Ken Nazak, as well as Leslie Check. They've been really instrumental in helping develop this year's master schedule, were a very helping place this year, were a crucial school year, a great spot, is gonna help us transition to next school year really well. I also want to thank all the supervisors. to thank all the supervisors. If this process would not have gone as smooth, that would not have been for them. Looking and very strategically analyzing each of their regular areas, each of their departments, so that once again, we are designing a schedule that's going to satisfy as many student course requests as possible. So let me turn it over to our first department we're going to highlight, and that would be our humanities department.
I'll take this one. I think I just went a slide. I'll stick with that. If it's okay over here, I'll address from here. I'm very excited about the expansion of the humanities research program for next year. If I can still do timeline approach, I'll bring us back to the fall of 2012 when we first started building it, remodeling the concept, and based it on research, but interestingly enough, focused on student research. So we built it during that first school year. This is the first school year that we implemented the pilot, and then there's an expansion for next. And I'll explain a little bit about how it works. Essentially, the humanities research is looking at courses in social studies and language arts. It's enabling students to find passions, conduct great research, real authentic research, and create demonstrations of learning, bringing them to a more student-centered classroom experience. Also something much more in line with 21st century skills and so on. I've gone to other school districts. I've studied what other schools are doing with their transitions in learning, but also with their technology. So at the heart of these courses, there is a technological component. We've been using Chromebooks. We've found great success with it. But one of the things, unless someone is exposed to it directly and they don't understand, is it's not about the technology. And I think that's one of the places we're doing things differently than some of the other districts. It's not about the technology. It's about what you do and what you can do differently. If we're just, if we just have a device that glows in front of us, and we do the same thing, we haven't moved anywhere. We haven't shifted. We're not taking the students to a different level. But what we're finding is the ability, through the 10 pilot classes that we've done so far, we're having the ability to take these students to a completely different plane, where they have a different experience, where they can't imagine going back. And that's the feedback we're getting from both students and teachers who have been involved. So currently this year, we've had five sections brought by one teacher in 12 at the enriched and grade level. We've had one teacher teaching social studies in US 2, enriched and grade level. Next year, we'll be going from two teachers and 10 sections to eight teachers and four sections. So it's a significant expansion, which will allow us to have this experience for students in all of the US 2 and US 1 enriched and grade level classes, and all of the English 12 and English 11 enriched and grade level classes. And that's the progress we're looking at for next year. So I think we're going to see a significant shift. I'm sure you'll find it some days.
Can I just take a comment?
Yeah, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Okay.
My comment is, I'm so glad that this is coming to all sections and not just enriched or honors class environment. I'm really excited that these tools and this method of teaching and having the children really learn in a way that's far more individualized is available to all students. And thank you for your enthusiasm.
I applaud you.
So, I just want to understand that exactly what you said there is the way it is. So all sections of...
Grade level and enriched, English 11 and 12, and all sections of grade level and enriched, US history 1 and 2, grades 10 and 11. That's amazing. That is so exciting. I wish that I had more children to send to the high school.
I was saying the same thing.
That's just wonderful. It's such authentic work, and it must engage so many students. And I just want to touch on something you said. Recently, I had the opportunity to attend the inauguration of a college president, and in his inaugural speech, the college recently went all Mac. But it was really, what he said was quite in line with what you just said, and that is, it's not about the technology. It's not about, you know, Mac versus PC, what kind of apps do you have? It's all about what do you do with it? And you just hit the nail on the head, and this is coming from a college president. So David, I'm sure that you are preparing our students for exactly what they need when they reach college. So, thank you. And thank the teachers, and thank all of you.
I will.
It sounds to me, I just have a question. It sounds to me, and I don't mean to put you on the spot with specific numbers or anything like that, but in seeing all the grade level sections of English 11 and 12, this essentially means that most of the students who cycle through the high school will have the advantage of having a research-type program, aside from science program. But in the humanities area, it sounds to me like it would cover in total the vast majority of children who cycle through that would have the opportunity at some point to take care of, to take advantage of a research-based curriculum.
I haven't, I haven't run the exact numbers of students, but yes, I think that it would be safe to say that the majority of students, meaning more than half, even if it did expand beyond this, would have had that experience. Yes.
That's true. And it does a lot of...
Because we would have students in 12th grade in English, 11th grade in both English and social studies, and in 10th grade in social studies. You know, one of the things I'll point out, if I'm able to do this at this point, I don't know, but it's, it's an interesting, it's not something that you just turn on. It's a significant shift in how a classroom is structured and how it works. And it's a delicate process. It's a very thoughtful one, where you need to change an entire mindset about how everything has gone about. And while I think as we, as we expand and as we study what happened when we expand and work through things, I predict, maybe this is dangerous, but I predict that ultimately it'll make sense to go, you know, all the way across in this way, and certainly make the adjustments that we go. You know, just actually today, I was in my office doing paperwork, and there was a student who stopped by and said, you know, "I just really want to thank you." I had no idea what it was about. And I asked, she said, "Excuse me?" And she said, "I really want to thank you because for the first time, I really like going to school." And, you know, I think there are other students out there too, because one of the beauties of this model is it insists that students learn through a lens of their particular interest. And it's different for each and every student that takes the course. It's modeled by who they are, rather than the course or the room or anything else.
It's participatory participation, participatory rather than being assigned.
Yeah, well, it's all about student discovery. It's about students really getting in there, pulling apart, and finding out about perhaps World War II, which they never cared about, ever. But because they're looking at it through the lens of their interests, and it's more complicated than justice, but because they're looking at it through the lens of their interest, which might be fashion or anything else, they're slow, and they're there. And now they want to know all about it. Fashion isn't particularly interesting to me. I can hardly match my clothes. But to some people, it's everything. And that's fantastic, because then they know what we need them to know, what we need skills, what we need them to gain, and they can go to college, and they can become whoever it is they want to be.
Thank you.
On the website, is there, I think people can read if they're not at this meeting right now.
I'm sorry?
Is there anything that people can read on the website?
Not yet.
There's one there.
Thank you. I guess I can see this meeting.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Schwartz, and I'm here to talk about some of the changes that we had in math and science. I'm very excited that we are adopting a new textbook series from grade six to 12. So we'll hopefully see much more continuity between middle school and the high school with this textbook series that we're adopting. It's going to have an online component that will be helpful. It will also have a tutorial. In addition, the high school is creating a math lab for the first time, and the purpose will be to remediate, to focus on students who are struggling and remediate some of the weaknesses or gaps that they may have for whatever reason. And the last big thing that's happening in math, based on student input and student interest, we are offering an AP Computer Science class, which a lot of the kids are really excited about. So in the math department, we have some great changes that are happening. In science, we also have some great changes that are occurring. One that was very popular was giving freshmen the choice between earth science and biology. And it turns out, most of them picked biology. We also have our research program, science research program, and just as a little plug, June 2nd is the science symposium at night at the high school. But we're going from one section of science research to actually three. So that's an amazing expansion of the program, and that is a little bit to its three-year commitment for 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. And our most recent course offering, again, actually was completely derived from student interest. We had a petition of 17 students who came and said that they really wanted this physics option, and everybody was very supportive, very helpful, and here it is. So for the first time, we're offering AP Physics C, which refers to the level of math, and the concepts that here are being focused are mechanics, electricity, and magnetism. So we have some pretty exciting things happening in both math and science.
Thank you.
Yes, I just have a question. The science research program currently has about 20 students.
We actually have 31 students.
Thirty-one, and so how many students will be going up to you? You said it was three sections.
Yes. So right now, we have them all kind of in one place, which is a lot. So we're adding it into smaller group sizes, because kids who are, who will be seniors next year for the first time will actually be competing. We have a few students who actually made it to the National Science Symposium, which was really exciting one place, one that's Washington DC. So we do need kind of a smaller class size to focus on those issues as a research program is advanced.
I know that, you said that there were 17 students that signed up. Is that petition for the AP Physics course, and is that the amount of students that requested to be in that?
We actually wanted to make sure that we just didn't limit to 17. So we actually sent a letter home. We targeted any student who was in pre-calculus honors or who was in physics. So any student who has the prerequisites can opt to sign up. The only higher stipulation, the college board recommends, that those students also take AP calculus concurrently. So our prerequisite for that AP Physics program will be AP calculus. If they don't have that requirement, then they can take AP Physics, which just focuses on mechanics, which is what we're currently offering this year. So we're actually offering both AP Physics for students.
And you're expecting to have enough qualified students for that?
Yes.
Excellent.
I just think it's a fantastic move, what you've done with the earth science and biology. I know when Dr. Freed came here, one of the things he always wondered was, why is it so important, all these kids, they all double up on sciences? And the fact of the matter is, I don't think it was so much important that kids could double up on science. It's that if you look globally, the most achieving districts and the high achieving students are taking biology their freshman year. And in Montville, we had earth science as a prerequisite for biology. So it wasn't so much everybody felt that they needed to take the two sciences, it's just that it was the only way they could get biology their freshman year, and they were forced to do it. And that is going to open up a lot of options for the other kids. I mean, believe me, I have nothing against earth science. It certainly has its place in, it's a very useful course in a lot of different reasons, but it's not necessarily for everybody. And I think by doing this, you're going to have a lot more opportunities for your kids, where now they can comfortably take the biology, and then maybe go to chemistry and bio 2, you know, anatomy, physiology, physics. It's just, it's a better progression.
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback on what I just said. The fact that when I raised, we now take biology, I think is a huge step forward for the district. And the fact that we have students who want to take AP Physics in mechanics and electricity and magnetism is just mind-blowing, knowing how hard physics is. So kudos to them.
It's extremely impressive. So the amount of action I would have taken in that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I wanted to first ask you all, the board, if you remember any Spanish that you learned back in April from Jamie Novak's students.
Comida.
Very good.
Adiós.
Oh, very good.
Uh... Hola. Libro.
I apologize for not being there that night. I came down with a flu, but I heard that the students had a great time. So, you did. Great. So, okay, so for all of us at the high school, the first big change that we had is the creation of a new teaching position to reflect the growth in the Italian and Spanish programs. Particularly at Lizar, the Italian program has numerous doubled in the last couple of years. So those students are now moving up to the high school. So we have growth in Italian at levels one, two, and two honors. And then there is some slight growth in the Spanish program at various levels, causing enough students, you know, causing the need to have another teacher in our department. The next change is that we'll be adding two AP courses. We'll be adding AP French Language and Culture and AP Italian Language and Culture, which is very exciting. This year, we only have AP Spanish and AP Mandarin. I think that by adding the AP option for all four languages, it'll kind of bring, you know, some more credibility to all four languages. And for our students who want to challenge themselves more and take that advanced place in class, they'll have the option, no matter what language they study, they won't have to take Spanish or Mandarin. We'll have that opportunity for Italian and French. Italian, right now, there's 18 students signed up for the class for next year, which this year there are none. So that's great. And French, there are eight. Going from none to eight is also, shows great promise. Looking ahead in the future, our Lizar eighth grade French program is also growing. So hopefully, we'll have growth at the high school in the next couple of years of the French program as well. We'll also be able to send teachers to the AP institutes this summer to prepare them to teach those AP courses. And the last thing, I wanted to word it like this, a curricular shift in the upper-level language courses. I've observed over the year, you know, a lot of the language, a lot of what is being learned in our classes is geared towards learning the target language, learning just the language vocabulary of grammar. What the teachers and I want to do is start in the upper levels, moving that shift towards studying the culture, the target culture. We all kind of agree, the reason why we all fell in love with another language is because of the culture, not because of, you know, the grammar that comes along with it. So next year, in all four languages, in our Level V classes, we're going to be focusing on creating more thematic units that follow newer curriculum that focuses on curricular studies. I'm sorry, cultural studies in the curriculum. That's it.
I think the cultural piece really helps the students learn the language.
That's what keeps us moving.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Thank you.
I think so, too. Thank you. I may have missed this. You said 18 students for Italian AP?
Yes.
That's phenomenal.
Yeah.
What about, I didn't, maybe I was, I missed something. What about Spanish and Mandarin other students?
Spanish has 16, which is, this year there were six. So that's a growth in Spanish AP. And Mandarin, I believe, is seven or eight, which is about the same.
And the overwhelming amount of students, do they take one particular language? Would that be Spanish, or French, or Italian? Is there one language that's more popular than the others?
Spanish has the highest enrollment for the whole program, not the AP. Spanish, Spanish has the highest enrollment for the whole program, not the AP. The highest AP class will be Italian next year. But Spanish is the most popular.
That's actually what I'm, what I'm getting at. I'm wondering, uh, if, if there's a reason for that, if there, um, if there's students that are taking Spanish or, um, it, it seems like if that's the most populated subject, one would think that that would be, uh, the area where there are more AP students. But it's wonderful, though, that Italian is.
Right. And hopefully, making these curricular changes in the upper levels will encourage more students to take level four, level five, or level, or, or challenge themselves with the AP class. So hopefully, in the next few years, we'll see the changes, and the AP numbers will reflect the, the popularity of the language.
So is, is that the reason why there aren't as many Spanish? Is because of, are students not selecting, um, four or level four Spanish?
I mean, for some students, when it comes to reading their schedule, purchasing their senior year, some of them are choosing another math class or another science class, overall language, which I'm obviously unhappy about. Which is why I want to encourage more of a cultural study approach at the upper level classes in the next two years, so that the students really see the importance and, you know, the fun of learning another culture.
Thank you.
So we'll choose that to work out in classes.
Thank you.
Dear board and public, I'm Mr. Fleisch, this is the advisor of Flying Form and Path College. Very excited to be sharing with you some very exciting things with you. High school has a band orchestra program. Um, next year, band orchestra is going to be moving to a full ensemble class. At this point, they each of those classes is met in four sections. So, um, the students have had instruction, but they haven't met as a full ensemble. Um, starting next year, um, all the students of band orchestra will be here for one period. And, um, in addition to that, there's going to be supplemental lesson program. We have a lesson program in place right now. It's kind of abbreviated. It encouraged around common lunch, but the teachers will now have time in their schedule to involve a full smaller lesson schedule. The lessons will be mostly by instrument, also by integrated instruments or buildings, and we can get a little bit later. But it's very exciting. Uh, the students are very excited about it. When I went around in February with a letter to parents explaining this, that it is a resurgent change, um, they were very appreciative. They all, they all took to me, and no one was shocked, no one had any questions. We were, like, very excited, and I just want to share, we just came back from a, a freshman leadership to, uh, Sci College, and also have a virtual campus Friday. Um, we had a master class at, uh, the Sci College, um, and now we have a project. There's been raised for support of three professors, a band orchestra course, and all the groups got to work on a new form of stage. And it was just, like, really exciting. And it was, like, after the performance, I was talking to the teachers and students, like, isn't great, they're going to be, like, holding this next year, and they're very excited about that. I can't, um, it'd be too much without thanking the board's patience, especially to, um, to not something that I would have just necessarily defined myself in future, in this, so, like, leadership and, and so forth. It's something that, I think it was early on, September morning, I showed up at the office and began this discussion. So it's great, really excited to see it coming to fruition. And another exciting thing next year, where the arts is the implementation of a new course called Tomorrow's Teachers. Uh, this is a full year course. It gets students to the planet, to experience education, to pass through small fashion experience. It focuses on four areas, experience in learning, experience in fashion, experience in education. Tomorrow's Teachers is, is designed by, um, it's a conjunction of the Community for Foreign Education and the College of New Jersey. And they design the curriculum, and we don't have to necessarily hire a new teacher. Our teacher, Brandon Smith, from high school, teaches a child development one, two, and three classes, uh, as different courses, uh, this year, July, or day two, actually, June 30th, July 1st, which will be training in math. We also have at least one full section where this course is under different schedules. So it's very exciting. Another thing is that students can take this class from a new college , right? I mean, it's fairly, it's similar, I don't know, if you doesn't check, you have to, uh, see someone. Uh, there's no prerequisite for the course. Students are just going to create education without, you see, taking about the course working in the summer of the class. And, uh, they're very excited about that. And, um, I would just like also to, like, thank Mr. Doug Sanford, our high school principal. The creation of master schedule is a very long and, uh, huge process. I think I was the first one involved, uh, three of the main cards, and that was just me. So I want to thank him again for his leadership. Are there any questions to that?
I have a question. Small group lesson, is that a, an actual class that a child has to sign up for and include in their schedule, or is it an optional, if you would like, small group lesson, here's what we have available?
It's actually, it's not optional, it's actually part of the band orchestra. So we have that in our program studies.
So they're, they're going to be attending, is it in conjunction with the ensemble, or it's just a separate?
Yes.
Class altogether?
Because we have a full ensemble, now you'll have forty-seven or fifty-seven students in an ensemble every day. In order to really promote their growth and development, then, then you need to get them to get a smaller, four to sixteen, and then a happy daughter times it up every day.
And tomorrow's teacher?
I was just going to ask, perhaps you could explain the mechanism, how the students are going to be in that, uh, school lesson environment, supportive of the standard?
Sure, sure. And we're kind of working on this, um, as, as part of the master schedule, exactly how they're going to do it. The students will be in small groups, for example, if it's a band, or maybe it's all fruits, or iron, or trumpets, or maybe it's a mixed class. Um, and there will be, uh, about one lesson per week, the way the high school schedule works, is we have a full day of vacation and cycles to about eleven times. Because the, the day rotates, the schedule, the lesson would be at, at a fixed time, on a certain day, on a certain time of day, on a Tuesday, one o'clock. So because every week, that Tuesday, one o'clock, will fall in different ways, in the schedule, in the class, the student will hopefully not just more than one, and, and not even one, but possibly two of that particular class, and they're given, um, marking for it. And it'll be done with great flexibility, and we'll talk to the teachers about this. We're careful how we're going to do this. The students are taking the test or the quiz, it's like the phone behind the class. They're giving excuses, and you're going to comment if there are, we haven't got all the details together, for example. If there could be ten potential lessons in a morning period, it might just have a eight percent. So we're going to create, I've implemented when I was a teacher, so I'm aware of the grading for sensitivity and flexibility in that, and I'm monitoring it very closely as we.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's okay. About tomorrow's teacher, you said that there are four, is it a four-year course?
Oh, it's one, the full year course.
Oh, full year, okay.
The full year course.
You know I could talk all day about this, so I'll just keep it a couple of minutes. And first of all, I want to thank everybody, and also Mr. Sanford also. I know this was a difficult thing, because, you know, many years ago, going back to about two thousand and five, when they first broke the band into, I can think of that by, I mean, five different sections, with no really consideration as to quality of the program, only just what made it easier to schedule. And when you start having band classes of twenty-five kids, twenty kids, and you're missing trumpets, you're missing drummers, before you know it, it just starts getting worse and worse, and the program was on a terminal bleed. And this year, my son is in a class of, like, fourteen kids, no trumpets, no drummers. You can't have a band person like that, it just doesn't work. And, uh, this is going to make it more fun for the students. You know, it is a fun, is a course, it's an academic course with a performance component, but you know what? It also has to be fun for the kids. The kids have to want to participate in it. It's going to make it more enjoyable, and the lessons that take place during the day, some people had said, meaning you're going to pull them out of the class for a music lesson, but you know what? The truth of the matter is, you go to ninety percent of these places around the state, around the country, that's just the way it's done. It's, this, the way we were doing it was not the rule, it was the exception. Um, you know, all over, people get pulled out of class on a rotating basis, and that's where you're learning the things like getting four clients to play in tune with each other, working on tone, working on articulation, things like that, things that you just can't do when you have the schedule we have now, where you really have neither large group construction nor small group construction. So I'm just absolutely thrilled, and, you know, Mr. Fleisch, I just, I thank you for taking the bull by the horns. I think you recognize this was a, um, problem, and this is just a great improvement in the program. I'm just very proud of this administration, really am.
Thank you.
Just, uh, some final notes, just something to point out. Um, other things that, that will subtly impact the master schedule overall and the curricular offerings to students going for next year, um, several years ago, well, that's a back, even before I joined the high school, financial literacy had been released, the Department of Ed had released a, or, or a required requirement for all students to complete a financial literacy course, a two and a half credit or semester course, um, in financial literacy. Our district, uh, I'll say, was slow to implement this program, and when we put it in place two years ago, um, we were kind of putting it in place at the eleventh hour, um, the fundamental, because we had all juniors in class, um, but we were kind of putting it in place at the eleventh hour, um, if these students needed it in order, in order to walk across the stage last year, I mean, seeing that diploma. We have made up time, and now we've reached the point, in our third year of offering financial literacy, where we're able to open the programs to all grade levels. The, we encourage students to take it in plan, so they can take it during the junior year, um, quite if there's the, your overall high school plan of studying, um, you know, puts it in a different place, and we have options for them to do that. Right now, I know, and we're finishing off, according to the schedule, um, we'll have students in ninth through twelfth grade taking financial literacy. Um, we continue to offer our online options, and our original offering was just, um, at the expense of a family, taking financial literacy, uh, through New Jersey Virtual School. However, we've enhanced that for three other online options. Name's not on that right now, but there are three additional online options in addition to, uh, New Jersey Virtual School. So there are four options. And they typically, for, if a student chooses to do this, they can do it during the school year, so in theory, they can do it outside of normal school hours, they can do it during the summer, um, whatever it is, it just be pre-approved by the Department of Ed to do that. And typically, an online course, if they choose to follow this path, um, will cost a county dollar, a hundred dollars, to them to do that course. Uh, some other things, uh, as, as Mr. Fleisch alluded to, um, in the next, our goal is to begin with, I'll give you a supplemental lesson schedule. Uh, I don't want to be so ambitious as to say we'll have that lesson schedule finalized before this school year concludes, but I am confident to say it'll be finalized before we begin next school year. So it's not something where we wait for the school year to start, to meet students, we'll know their schedules, we'll build this lesson schedule, so it's ready to be enacted on day one of school. Um, also is, uh, you know, I mentioned before, the high school has been very aggressive and proactive in trying to attract and hire candidates for new positions we've created, as well as for, um, filling in for these retirements, and we did have several of them this year. Um, and once again, as you see through the agenda, we have, we're nearly at a hundred percent staff, uh, for our full-time positions offering each year. Um, I think we just have one last position to fill. So now we begin to shift our focus, as we conclude this school year and throughout the summer, on really focusing and making sure that all these different program, uh, these program improvements are going to be successful from, from day one. We, you know, we'll be putting forth our energy, um, for the next three or four months, so that we hit the ground running and start off this school year in a very positive fashion. Couple other things I just want to make sure I throw in there, um, in addition to some other, some additions to athletics, some of the coaching positions, um, I don't want to, uh, I don't want to make mention of anything else I see in the yet, or perhaps some athletic facility enhancements that might be coming in, in the near future. Um, we also have several new clubs that will be, or new stipend positions that will be
There's an addendum out there that really kind of locks it in.
I haven't seen that yet. Um, but, um, new stipend positions, four of which are actually clubs, um, so I'm very happy to be saying that we're expanding not only our curricular offerings to our students, but our program offerings. Um, the creation of the Chinese, uh, Language Honor Society, which is now, is a language honor society for all four languages that we offer, um, the Gay Street Alliance, the History Club, as well as the creation of the Literary Magazine. The final position, which is not really a club, it's in more of a stipend position, is Auditorium Manager. That position is still being worked through, but we've placed it for the start of next school year. Um, really, as I said, it's been gone in conjunction with some of the findings of that music, uh, I'll call it, um, the, um, the two core vocabulary for that, for that analysis of the music program that was conducted from last year and a half, um, the need for the creation of this position, as well as some potential enhancement still, as well in the future. This position will be created in conjunction with that. With that being said, are there any questions or comments?
I, I have a comment. Um, I want all of us to remember, back in two thousand and ten, during a budget crisis, when we, the board, perceived, uh, that supervisors were low-hanging fruit that could be eliminated. And we did. We eliminated almost all the positions. I think we had maintained three of them. Now I want you to fast forward to tonight, and with almost a full complement of, uh, discipline-oriented supervisors, this is where we are, and it's just so exciting. And I just can't thank you enough. I'm so pleased that we've restored so many discipline-oriented supervisory positions, because clearly, you're improving the qua, the quality, the choices. Um, it's just an amazing time to be part of this school district. And, I mean, we, you know, we oftentimes thank Dr. Freed for his insights. I'm thanking all of you, really, thank you. And as well, Mr. Sanford, you. Um, the kind of work that must go into building a master schedule must be, you know, incredible. And now, not only have you taken that master schedule from where it was, now you've created more choices, more courses. It's just amazing. I'm, I'm just overwhelmed. I, I really am. I'm just overwhelmed. Thank you.
I appreciate that very much. And in regards to master schedule, I'm, I'm very excited to be working with Penn Dad's, I would say, and I'm very happy to be back in the board shortly.
Just, uh, sorry. Just want a couple more kudos to, it's hard for me to bring back the supervisors, had the enhancements and everything like that. We couldn't do that if we didn't have the money, and, uh, for that, here we've, uh, excellent business administrator, Mr. Tevis, kept us in good financial shape, he managed our finances well. Um, if it wasn't, except we didn't have the money, we couldn't do this, so, yeah, kudos to you, too. And, uh, one more recommendation, History Club, so it's a new stipend position. When my daughter was in high school, she was in the History Club. Mr. Porter was there at the History Club back then, as he is now. I had actually no idea until this year that he was making a stipend for it. So it's, it's long overdue, and I just want to say publicly, Mr. Portia, for no compensation, I just want to thank you for your dedication to the students, for enriching their academic opportunities and their, you know, culture with regard to history at, it probably cost you money instead of getting money, so, um, I just wanted to thank you again, and, uh, quite as too late for Jean, very well done. Thank you.
And those of us that were board members in two thousand and ten remember how we felt, like our hearts were ripped out, uh, as the district did, with all of the negative influences of the budgetary cuts and the loss of state aid. And this district has lost, and I've said this a number of times publicly, over ten million dollars over the last few years. And I agree with Mike, what you say is, is so true, the way that we've been managed financially. I'll give the finance, uh, committee, uh, a shout out, Mr. Brown's leadership. Um, but, Mr. Tevis, what we have been able to do has allowed Dr. Freed, with all of his academic leadership, to really begin to move this district forward. The other night at the, uh, town hall meeting, Dr. Cortovino and I were, were, were so proud to sit there and hear some of the answers to questions of our supervisors. Is that correct? Uh, it, uh, again, where we were a few years ago, now to see the quality of individuals that Dr. Freed, you have selected, uh, we feel that we're in very good hands. And, and thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Sanford.
I happen to come on board in the spring of two thousand and ten, in the middle of, and Jackie Richel had said, you know, people kept saying to her, when she wanted to run, "Why are you doing it? It's like the most reckless job." And people said that to me when I ran in two thousand and ten, and I sat in the audience, meeting after meeting with John Morella during her campaign, and when we realized that the board was going to have to cut nearly four point two million dollars in the span of weeks, or what felt like really days. to have to cut nearly $4.2 million in the span of weeks, or what felt like really days, the state cut 3.2 in aid, and then the tax committee cut another $956,000. So yes, I think a lot of people in the audience on those evenings who were very vocal about what they consider to be extremist positions or padding, quote unquote, padding in the budget. And I remember thinking, oh my God, what have I gotten myself into? And this is so, it was depress, almost depressing. And I think what also needs to be said is not only has Dr. Freed and this present administration worked so hard to move the district forward on all these curriculum changes, on facilities improvements, including with Dr., with Mr. Tevis's leadership, they are also now facing, and I hope people see this on YouTube, since 2010, we have now revamped the curriculum because of the Common Core, on top of all these advancements in our own district. We have now had to deal with PARC testing coming on next year. We've had to deal with placing, just in this year alone, a half a million dollars nearly in the budget to buy Chromebooks and to increase the infrastructure. So on top of all of these improvements, because thankfully, while I think the board felt at least the first year or the first 18 months that we were just kind of maintaining, and it really felt like being under barricades, we are moving it forward, but we are also moving the district forward, or you, and I'm talking to the administration and Mr. Tevis, are moving it forward, and we are, you are now being asked to do even more than you have been doing four years ago. And I think people don't realize that, and it's very easy, if you don't come to meetings, if you're not involved in public education, to understand that it's truly challenging, even in what we consider to be a more affluent school district, with resources on the average parent that probably are superior than in a lot of other districts in this state, that it is still nonetheless incredibly challenging to move a district forward and then be under the barrage of HIV laws, HIV process requirements, PARC testing, and all curriculum changes, the revamping of a teacher evaluation system. I don't know how the administration is actually managing to do it all and move us forward. So I commend the entire administration.
Well said.
So, Mrs. Sanford, thank you so much for your leadership and, and our supervisors, directors as well. Thank you for all that you contribute. You did a terrific job, and we appreciate that a great deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to put this presentation on the website, I think, on the district website as well as the high school website, so I know that I have this already. I'm not sure if it's your final version, so please be sure to, to make sure I get that, please. Thank you. Don't you all feel you need to stay for the end?
Feel free. You're doing such good work. Go home and do more good work. Create more good work. You need to rest. This is the history.
Thank you, Dr. Ford. Just want to take a moment to point out two items that are, two new initiatives really that are on the agenda for the SEEP. One is in the area of our facilities, and it's, affects the high school directly, and that's the high school athletic playing fields improvements project. And what this was, this really came about from a relocation of the Lazar Middle School playing field, which was recently closed. Dr. Freed had sent a memo out to the staff and the school district on it. And what we're going to be doing is improving a number of playing fields over at the high school. And we opened bids this morning, actually, at 11:00 AM on this project, received three bids, and we did receive one low bid that was within our construction budget. That being said, an amended resolution has been put forward to the board for consideration in a few minutes to award that bid to Applied Landscape. Those of you that kind of keep up with the facility projects in the district, Applied Landscaping was actually one of the donors that had worked on the construction of our football field, synthetic football field not that long ago. So we're very happy to be making this recommendation, SEEP. Another initiative that we're moving forward on is an area food service operations, once every five years, we've required one, some supposals for those operations. We just did that, and we actually had a committee that assisted us with the process this year. And I just want to take a moment to thank those people that took their time, because it really, it is time consuming, and it was very, very helpful actually to help me make a recommendation to the board on moving forward with this initiative. Some of the individuals were the middle school principal, Sharon Carr, Doug Sanford, our high school principal, Terry Hayden, assistant principal of the middle school. We also had some teachers and some parents who were also involved. Matt Myers at the middle school was very involved, headed up the wellness committee there. We had some, some parent leaders, Janice and Cece from, represented the high school, Leanna Russo from the middle school. Andrea Silagi also sat in and helped with that process. And two individuals that really spearheaded it in the business office was Ralph Dubwin and Barbara Stader, the assistant, the school business administrator. I really thank all of them for their time. That being said, we've made a decision to actually move to a different food service management company. It's going to be the Pomptonian. I, I've actually worked with Pomptonian in a, in a previous district. They're very well-known in the state of New Jersey, particularly in Morris County. The committee weighed in heavily on it. It was very close between our current food service management company, Aramar, and Pomptonian. But that being said, the recommendation is being put forward to the board this evening, and we're looking forward to, to working with Pomptonian and with the, this parent committee and wellness committee on some of the new initiatives, and moving the district, you know, possibly just one step in a new direction. So that being said, that is my conclusion.
Thank you. I'll just comment on the food services vendor, having sat in on many wellness committee meetings. There was the Punsar line goal, well, outright goal, that committee was to improve the healthy choices that we offer our staff at the middle school. So I am very pleased that Matt Myers, who headed up the wellness committee, was participated in the committee on the new selection of vendors, because I know Matt is a real advocate of healthy eating. And so I hope that members of the wellness committee, I'm sure Matt has let me know that he had input in that we are actually changing vendors. So I think it is a step in the right direction. Thank you. Um, committee reports? Trolleys, the minutes aren't reading for the questions. CIT?
I'm going to be talking to the assistant superintendent.
So meeting? Policy personnel? Mike?
Yeah, I mean, we had a meeting on April 28th, but the last meeting, I just gave a very confronting report, and I said that at this meeting, I'd go in just a little more detail because we didn't have the minutes yet. So just, I'll still try to keep it brief, because we've been here a while, obviously. These are all for first reading tonight. Policy numbers 0141 and 0143 have to do with board member number and term, and board member election and appointment. As a result of a new law recently adopted, amending various parts of the school election laws to accommodate the November school election, by law, 0143 has been revised. The revisions are minor, and it's not the first reading. And the new 0141 is going to replace existing 0141. Policy number 1581 is victims of domestic or sexual violence leave. There's something called the New Jersey Security and Financial Empowerment Act, or the New Jersey Safe Act, which is adopted, and requires political subdivisions of New Jersey to provide leave time to an employee if they or their, anyone in their family is a victim of domestic violence or a sexually violent offense. Policy numbers 3125 and 4125, employment of teaching staff members and employment of support staff members, being revised to remove some options that are seldom ever included. Policy numbers 3230 and 4230, outside activities, teaching and support, revised due to another school district's local education association challenging certain sections of that school district's policy, 3230, which is similar to how we're in. In light of the challenge, stress estimates are going to make some minor changes. Policy regulation 3240, professional development for teachers and school leaders. Title 6A has been revised regarding required professional development for teachers, and our policy is reflecting that. Policy regulation 9120, public information program, being updated to reflect some new procedures. The district is looking to make, implement, elected digital signatures. It's going to be available to the district's Genesis Information Management System. Policy 9400, news media relations, being updated to include a designate beyond the superintendent to serve as a liaison between the media and the school district, and finally, regulation 2340, field trips, being updated to provide some more specific guidance for field trips.
Thank you. Mike, any questions for Mike? Okay. Any other committee reports, communications?
Well, yeah, we didn't send any notes out, but we had a very brief meeting this past Friday, in particular, it was to discuss the two social media outlets that have now officially gone online. Dr. Freed had sent out a letter about Facebook and Twitter, as we mentioned earlier this evening. Dr. Freed, we talked a bit about the social media policy, and also a fairly in-depth focus on the preservation of First Amendment rights. We also learned that Marinello is working with Austin Thompson to improve the website. I would like to put together maybe before the school year, and we'll send out emails pertaining to that.
Any questions from that? Okay. Delegate the ASN, NJ SBA, I know there's not many people in the audience, but I'm going to give a report anyway, because hopefully someone will watch us, because there was some important business discussed. So the delegate assembly meets twice a year. It's, it's sort of a congress, if you will, of New Jersey School Boards Association, and they will adopt various resolutions and change policy based on resolutions submitted by various school boards. They also have a number of committees that deliberate on various items, and then will come up with either bylaws changes or changes in governance. So at this particular meeting, there was an ad hoc committee on NJ SBA governance. I had to serve on that committee, and it was decided that there would be an elimination of floor nominations for officer positions at the DA. All positions now would have to go through a paper trail, if you will, be submitted in advance. We heard a report from the Special Education Committee, a report from the Special Education Task Force, and the Special Education Task Force, perhaps you've seen in the, in the news, newspapers, online, came out with 20 recommendations, which I will not read because it's easily accessible. But they did give a report at, at the delegate assembly. There were a number of resolutions that were adopted. The first resolution was submitted by Glassboro School District, and it would prove, it's a resolution that states that full funding for state initiated, initiated programs designed to promote innovation, and that the level of participation in such programs should be determined by the local school district, and that the state should pay for anything that they impose. There was another resolution that was passed, which... Policies regarding professional development, including staff attendance at conferences, workshops, and conventions, should be locally negotiated. Another resolution had to do with preschool education that should not be mandated by the state unless state funds are provided. Provided for voting rights at sending and receiving districts to the sending school districts on certain items where they had been barred in the past. Now, for me, the highlight of the meeting was a report that was requested at the NJ SBA DA a year ago, and that report was on the study of the impact of salary caps on chief school administrators. And NJ SBA actually had sent an advanced copy to me. I was lucky to get one, but they did do a formal presentation on Saturday. I sent a copy to our local school board and to a couple of parents that have been involved with this. Basically, the discussion, I'll just read you some expert, some excerpts of their, their discussion and conclusions. NJ SBA has and continues to impose the imposition of a hard cap on salaries of chief school administrators. Specific salary caps tied to district enrollment are overly rigid and do not take into account certain variables, such as consolidation of additional administrative responsibilities. NJ SBA also believes that existing provisions in state law and the administrative code, such as the 2% property tax, levy cap, and the statutory limitation on administrative spending increases render a superintendent's salary cap unnecessary. A, by the way, 2004 law imposed a hard restriction, a 2.5% maximum on year-to-year increases in a school district's administrative expenditures. So for those who say that we spend too much on administrators, New Jersey is number 46 in the country on what we spend on administration, so it's just not true. Getting back to the salary cap, the executive county superintendent is required to approve all new contracts for central office administrators, and the review process is far-reaching and brings into clear focus the power exercised by the state through the Office of the ECS over local school administrator contracts. Limits on superintendent salaries adopted by, sorry, adopted by the state place New Jersey school districts at a distinct disadvantage when hiring chief school administrators. The role of the Board of Education is not to advocate for administrators' salaries, but to ensure quality school leadership. For a number of school districts, the existing constraints on superintendent salaries stands in the way of fulfilling that responsibility. Contrary to the beliefs of some, administrative spending in New Jersey has not been a problem, and again, they mentioned that we're number 46 in the country. NJ, NJ SBA believes that the property tax levy cap and the statutory restrictions on administrative expenditures, existing regulations adopted pursuant to the Accountability Act, and the ECS review of employment contracts provides sufficient controls on salaries for chief school administrators. Therefore, regulatory salary caps are unnecessary. Now, these are not my opinions, although they sound like mine. These are opinions of the NJ SBA's year worth of work. And finally, in conclusion, superintendent turnover rates have fluctuated since the superintendent's salary cap went into effect. About 38% of the state's 570 operating school districts have experienced turnover. Over the same period, there were 295 instances of turnover, with several districts having two or more new or interim superintendents during the three-year period. Overall, in 97 school district, superintendents left because of the cap, of the 89 districts that hired a permanent replacement. 56 were new superintendents, never having held a position before. While not the only reason, the cap on CSA salaries is a significant factor in superintendent turnover in New Jersey. As of the 2015-16, as the 2015-16 school year draws near, the five-year contracts in place in February of 2011 come up for renewal, and we are likely to see more dramatic movement. The inability to offer a new superintendent salary commensurate with the predecessor, and in some cases, lower than other administrative staff, has created instability. A position as an interim superintendent who may collect his or her pension together with the salary paid by the district is much more enticing to the pool of experienced superintendents. The New Jersey Legislature and Executive must carefully review the efficacy of this policy. In reducing school expenditures while assuring the quality of education and student achievement, the policy will require a political remedy to address its consequences. So that's a mouthful, but I think every single person... So, that's a mouthful, but I think every single person in the state of New Jersey should read this report, and certainly every legislator is getting a copy of this report. So, I thought it was important that... I'm sorry it was a little long, but I think it was important to bring this to light. And as some of you know, we are meeting with our local legislators, and we're actually expanding out into Sayak and Bourbon County to reach out to some of the legislators in those school districts, along with counterparts in Sayak and Union County. So, there is legislation, Vice Assemblyman Deegan and Senator Ruiz, to prevent the DOE from setting the maximum salary, and we are on a mission to encourage our legislators to support that legislation.
Karen, thank you for taking the time to bring that here and to read it. It's extremely important for citizens to understand the damage that that salary cap has done to many school districts across the state. We've talked about it here. You hear about it in the press and lack to hear that we have some citizens who are aggravated as well, that are trying to speak on behalf of good districts across the state, and let's hope that the messages are loud and clear.
Carol, thank you for bringing that to the board, speaking publicly on legislature. And while the findings indicated that we are 47th in what we pay our chief administrator, we also provide, as a state, public education that consistently ranks in the top five in the country, and we do occupy one of the most expensive metropolitan areas to live in.
Right. The number 46 comes from our administrative cost per pupil nationwide. Our administrative cost per pupil nationwide is number 46 out of our 50 states. So, administrative spending is not a problem in New Jersey. And as you point out, we consistently rank in the top four or five of both states.
And just to put it in a nutshell, for people who heard the words, might not quite understood the message, just about one sentence or less, all we're saying is that we have a cap already on what we can spend. Nobody's asking the state for any more money. Nobody's saying we want to spend more money. The only thing we're trying to say is, if you can tell us how much we can spend, that's fine, just don't tell us how to spend it. That's all we're asking for.
Mike?
I agree. Thank you for all the work that's gone into this approach for the problem, and I agree with everything you've said.
Well, those words that I read were not mine.
Yeah.
I didn't do any of the work contained in this report, but that's the New Jersey School Board's report.
Hopefully, something else of interest. Once this, if this eventually passes, a serious issue, which we may get on that crusade also, is the practice of retired administrators collecting pension and double-dipping in poor communities. I think that's the next project, and it is a serious project.
I have one more report to give. It's the Morris County School Board Association, met on April 30th. What we saw tonight in our fifth graders, they did the same presentation at that meeting, and they bought school board members from throughout Morris County. We honored a variety of board members achieving certified master and CBL, and we heard a legal update on social media. Any other liaison or PTC liaison reports?
Can I just mention one thing? I wasn't able to get at that meeting, Karen, but one other thing I believe that went on at that meeting is that there was a presentation to you, and I don't think we've mentioned that. There are different levels. Have you? There are different levels of board membership, and I think those of us that are around the board at, and certainly those of us that are close enough to know you, recognize how much you do behind the scenes and how hard you work to be the best board member you can be. Board members can just take the required continuing education, but they can also go beyond. There are three different levels that board members can reach: certified board member, member of master board member, certified board leader. And you were honored that evening, and I feel really bad that you're not having been there as a master board member, and congratulations for that. It's quite an accomplishment.
Thank you. I hope that there were, I think, five or six of us that night. Thank you.
We're proud of you.
Thank you. Any other delegate liaison or PTC reports?
Very briefly, I have DAC. My second Wednesday in the month I met, and among other things, DAC discussed the fact that Dr. Freed has been with DAC recently, having to do with hopefully getting some initiatives into the schools, which will increase the education as far as driving alcohol awareness.
Thank you.
Karen, I was at the, talking PTC liaison, I was at the other night, the MTHS PTC meeting. I'll be brief. First of all, I want to congratulate publicly Michelle Turnball for her leadership this year. She's going to be replaced as president by Colson Palmer, I believe has already been replaced. There are a number of things that were discussed. Amongst them, senior attendance after the prom, a letter that Dr. Freed had sent out was discussed by Mr. Sanford. He also discussed the master schedule and the early year development of the master schedule this year than last, and encouraged parents also to communicate and thank the five retirees from MTHS. There will be a new, more complete medical clearance form for the athletes, and Mr. Sanford is working with his administration to get that out. There's a physical exam as well as a cardio aspect to it as well. There was discussion about the athletic field, the media center projects, and finally, a bunch of gifts from the PTC were approved.
Any questions? Mike, did you have a report on Mustangs?
Mustangs, which are very similar to some of the things that you just said. They met on May 7th, and of course, new officers are coming in. Our athletic director and principal generally handled a very field update situation, but one of the things that was on people's minds, again, and they knew the state tonight and focused on it, was about the fields. They had a lot of curiosity, so obviously, it will be solid with Iron K. Today's, we're very interested in that. And they also valued you, 14th, the day they had their election for their officers. One issue that did come up was about the power lines. Without giving too much of the oneway, I know it was true, and that we were surprised as anybody, how the way things transpired, the energy, our power lines, if permission had been explained.
Given the fact they were turned on, required to...
Yes.
What, any notification?
Right.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. Any other PTC liaison reports? Nothing from you? Carol, we're up to the public for public participation on anything on the agenda. And since I see Terry Momadine coming to the mic, I want to thank you personally for traveling around to the different assemblymen and senators as we try and convince them to support the legislation. Terry has been very supportive of this and has taken time out of her day to travel with us on a number of occasions, so thank you.
I'm Terry Momadine, resident of Drive and Park Brook, parent of the fifth and eighth grader of the district, and I actually wanted to thank Dr. Corleena for her leadership and time spent on the salary cap issue. And I wanted to thank, excuse me, all the supervisors and Mr. Sanford, who are not here. I feel it is a very exciting time to have an incoming ninth grader into the high school as well.
It is, very good observation. Anyone else? Of the one, two members of the public, and three? Okay, I will close public participation and train the motion for either side to go, including the addendum. So, Carmella, second? I'll say. Okay, any questions on the minutes? Item J?
Actually, do have a question on item J. J1, this gift from Pathways, just, what exactly is the genesis of this gift for this evening? Sure. The Pathways organization organized a fundraiser. It was a basketball game, the Harlem Wizards was playing against local mock bill individuals, had been some teachers involved and others in that game fundraiser. And to, I think, enhance participation, Pathways organized a student event during the basketball game, free throw shooting, that kind of thing, with the caveat that whoever, put this in quotation marks, won the event, won the contest of sorts. I'm not sure exactly what that may have looked like. They would get money donated on behalf of that winner to the district to be used in the schools. So, that's worth taking. Yeah, it was a nice gesture on the part, and I just wonder, I may not think too much outside the box here, but I have half a mind to say no on this gift and say, Pathways, thank you for the thought, and you know what? You do wonderful work for kids, and perhaps they should take that money and use it for their own purposes to support their own program and the good work they do. Is there any thoughts on that?
Was there, I'm sorry, I might have missed this. Was there anything specifically you wanted us to do with the donation?
I don't think that was indicated exactly, but I can look into that further. I think it's being donated from good faith, and it goes up more in the stated purpose I can acquire into that. So, are we going to look down the agenda now? Or is there a moment that says polling, look into it?
I don't have a particular thought to reject it in Pathways.
I think Pathways meant to do so. There's a reason to do that. But it's a noble thought to have, Mike.
Yes.
So, my feeling is that...
We're uncomfortable to accept, you know, the board's comfortable to accept the donation, and I'm sure we can use it for a good purpose.
Iron K?
Yeah. I think talk about K in Pomponian. Just by way of disclosure, I think I would have disclosed this to the board. I'm an attorney, I've represented the Pomponian recently. Now, I represent them through their insurance company. No money's passed back and forth between me and the Pomponian or anything like that. The long and short of it is that they had a civil suit. I'm sure everyone had absolutely nothing to do with food. As a matter of fact, the civil suit ultimately ended up just being...
Wasn't food poisoning, was it?
No, that's nothing to do with food. As a matter of fact, they got out a case on summary judgment. I don't think I have any conflict, but Doug, do you feel differently? Do you think I should abstain?
I don't think there's a conflict either. If you feel more comfortable abstaining, I don't think it's going to affect towards passing this resolution. So, I don't believe that that representation that you had of Pomponian would conflict you out from throwing even yes or no on this resolution, but again, if you feel more comfortable abstaining, I don't see the issue.
We have five votes if you wanted to abstain.
Okay.
Well, I think we do, you know. I think we do, so on my part, I prefer to abstain as well.
Okay. I don't hear anybody else saying anything about K, so I might just abstain just to avoid the principle before we...
Sure. Anything on L? And N? The addendum? Okay. Local?
This note?
Yes.
Dr. Corleena?
Yes.
Dr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
No on J2.
Abstain on K8, yes, I would be able to.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. The old business, additional reports or general board comments? Carol, we're up to get to the public for anything they want to talk about. Seeing none, motion to adjourn?